Good morning. It's my pleasure to welcome each one present. I call this meeting to order. Let's have our roll call, please. All right, let's stand and we'll have our indication pledge.
Oh dear, Hallelujah Father, we thank thee again for this opportunity that we have to come together to carry on the business of Pitt County. We ask the richest blessing, Father, upon each and every one. And oh, Hallelujah Father, we pray that we will make the right decisions that will guide and direct and help us to do those things that will be pleasing unto thee. We ask thee, oh Father, to go with us as we go into this meeting and give us all that knowledge that we need and require, Father. We ask thee to forgive us of our sins. We ask thee in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Let us face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
To approve.
Second. All right, let's vote. All right, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the first item on your agenda under presentation is to hear a presentation from the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority. I do not know if Jerry Vickers, who is the director, is here yet. That being the case, if you'd like to maybe defer this and then come back to it.
All right, we will go to the next item, the public address to the board.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have one person sign up this morning. Brenda Harris will come forward, please.
I may need some help on how to get this, since it's not in order. James, could you help me get this so that this one sheet? I'm Brenda Harris and I would like to have five minutes because I represent those that have been foreclosed on. And let me just start when the presentation hits the...
That's a request to have an additional time where outline of the what's the normal, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to have it.
Okay.
Proceed, Ms. Harris.
Thank you. I'm Brenda Harris. My address is on file. Since approximately 2004, I have actually been under attack because of my stand against taxes. But you recently received a certified mail package this past week and you're on notice. Now, what's in front of you is the enforcements that Ms. Booker says that she has done. What you need to understand is under Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VI, it says that any government or any other entity in the United States, including North Carolina and including Pitt County, if they receive any amount of federal funds, then they have to make sure that there's no discrimination on race, minority, national origin. But then the seniors were given that. Then every other, right now, the President has actually written into law that people of sexual differences are now covered. What you need to understand is that in our taxes, it goes back to when the embezzlement was in 1994. Y'all have been given misinformation from your county manager because you, over time and time again, I've said, "Ask for details." Because what you have at stake, these papers are going to the federal government. Let's look under attachments and tell you how bad it is. In 2008, '09, it was 1,245. You have these documents. They were served upon you. What you might need to know is that our county attorney and our tax office and our county manager, they know how to send out certified mail. But there's 15 days allowed to actually receive it before it's sent back. You're obligated to see that the services are served before you seize bank accounts. So you have somewhere in the neighborhood of 7,000 or 8,000 accounts that you've done wrong because nobody asked for details. Under wage garnishments, Rita Rim worked every day for East Carolina. And you've heard Ms. Booker say, "But I do this and I do this and I do this." And I said again to you, "Ask for details, folks." Because of these enforcements, I have to tell you that there's 100,000. There were 25,000 vehicles that disappeared and went to the state. Now, under the law of collection, there's not only, the Department of Revenue has not said Pitt County does it right. They have said, "Well, we're in charge of appraisals. We don't do collections." And that's where the state of North Carolina is guilty. Because you see, you're not guilty because Brenda Harris says that you're wrong. I am on tax auction on the 6th, which is Wednesday. I invite you to come on down because there's going to be media there. And you might like to know that a certified mail went out, but it wasn't picked up. It wasn't serviced because our county attorney is overloaded with work. She can't look at everything. And our county manager is dice it, slice it, spin it, win it. But now I'm telling you that your federal funds are not just at stake. They're on the line. Because when I profile, and I do evidence upon evidence, when we go into court, Mr. Owens is going to have to tell you that in 2004, I was in Wilson County and the speaker phone was on. And I heard an attorney from this county, and I'm not going to mention who it was, on my Wednesday, said, "You know, we're going to buy tickets for the judges." That's illegal. "And we're going to have a party with the attorneys." And then what they said is, "Oh, I own the town and I control the court." So when I go into court, y'all, I'm going to make sure that the federal government knows that I'm not going to get a clean slate. I can tell you that Rusty Duke hears cases of the hospital and BB&amp;T. And I can tell you that that farm that's on foreclosure, tax foreclosure, Ms. Gallagher knew that it had never gone through planning. It was a general statute, 4730N, which meant it was illegal to pass any rights. So you go and you say, "Oh, there's an ordinance for Brenda Harris." Well, praise the Lord. But there's an ordinance that you have to have that fits the bill for every single person, or you have discriminated. You know, Mr. McGlaughlin, would you like to go to a restaurant again? And they say, "Because of the color of your skin, you can't come in." Would you like to say that you can't have a promotion because of the color of your skin? How about you, Mr. Hammond? Would you like to go back to the days of 1964 when there were no rights? Well, then I'm telling you that it's a time that you stand up. You asked Ms. Booker on 1.69, how many taxes did Graydon Tripp pay? It was the same zoning. It was everything. It was the same cut over Woodsland. But our present use exemptions are given out like candy. So he paid $50 a year and I pay $7,500. Twice have I been targeted. And you say, "Well, Brenda, why haven't you stopped it?" An attorney told me, he said, "Don't lull your up." He said, "Don't lull your up." Because at that point in time, thank you, I'll conclude, at that point in time, you know that you are being watched. What I did is I led you into an ambush these past two or three years. Every public address was documenting that you knew that you were violating. Now they're going federal. And you can make a decision this day before Wednesday at the auction because there's going to be plenty of media there. Over 300 people and 80% are Afro-American. If the Afro-Americans don't have the guts to stand up, then Brenda Harris does. Because this is the day the Lord has made, and I will rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
All right. Your next, is the airport manager yet?
Um...
Okay, we'll go ahead.
Okay, under items for report, the manager's report, your next meeting date's August 18th will be the third Monday of August at 6:00 p.m. And then in the month of September, September the 8th at 9:00 a.m. Want to bring to the board's attention, you're aware of that the NCA-CC conference is coming up August 14th through 17th. And I believe we've got Commissioners Nick McGlaughlin, Vice Chairman Webb, and Ms. Ward are signed up to go to that, as well as myself and Janice Gallagher and Mike Taylor. ECVC banquet will be October 2nd, 2014. I believe the clerk has been calling around to see who might be interested in attending that in terms of securing a table. Head to our thing, I just wanted to announce that I'm not on here real quickly. As the board is aware and the public, just wanted to publicly recognize the passing of former county commissioner Terry Shank. They had a memorial service for her Saturday. And just wanted to recognize her service to the citizens of Pitt County and to this board and recognize her. One last item, we did receive written notification from the Federal EDA Economic Development Administration. This is actually a letter that came jointly to the Community College and to the county regarding the grant fund request to help build the College of Science and Technology Building. They were denied this funding for the, in that grant funding cycle. They're being encouraged to apply again this fall to be reconsidered. So we'll be working with the Community College on that. So ahead.
Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I have a motion.
All right, let's vote. Okay, items for discussion, Ms. Booker.
Before you, you have some papers that are inserted into a board book. And in that board book, these are, this is information that we use for our board, our employees, and for you. So we would like to have these back after you've had a chance to look through this so that we can recirculate it through our Board of VNR and also to our employees as well. In that, in this board book, I have also paper clipped the important parts that relate to the motor vehicles. We would like for you to read the whole book, but just for today, I have paper clipped the parts that are relevant to motor vehicles. We had, I'm going to start with your first page of your memo. We had build a motor vehicle on 10/14/08. And per North Carolina general statutes, we are supposed to build that to our last known address. And we mailed a, then a final notice was mailed on March of '09. And then a tax block was entered into the NCDMV system on 3/12/09, and a block notice was mailed to the taxpayer. We had no change of address filed in the office. We looked in the notes in the account. We make notes when we have a change of address from the post office or when we have one inside the office. And all notices were mailed to this taxpayer within a forwarding order timeframe. So if one had been completed, one or if not all three would have made it to the taxpayer. At the time this one was billed, we sent three notices to the taxpayer. And we had no notification of any type of postal change of address. The taxpayer did turn in a license plate to the NCDMV in Wake County. And the third attachment, the second attachment you have is a receipt that the taxpayer received from the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles. Down at the bottom is a note that says, "The county requires a copy of this receipt and a copy of the bill of sale within one year in order to process a possible release or refund of property taxes on the vehicle." And if this had been done, we would have caught this very early, as we do not receive notification from DMV. On your second attachment, it will give you the relevant statute that says 105348, "All Interested Persons Charged With Notice of Taxes." And what that says, anybody that owns real and personal property in the state knows that there are real and personal property taxes on that. There are also some other relevant statutes about interest becomes part of the bill when it accrues. That is listed for you. And then there are three cases in which we can actually release a tax bill. One, a tax imposed through clerical error, which we did not have on this bill. An illegal tax, which we did not have on this bill. And a tax levied for an illegal purpose, which we did not have on this bill. The way we came about finding this is the collection staff located the place of employment of the taxpayer in June 2014 through an Employment Security Commission search, and a wage garnishment was issued on 6/14. And per the statutes, this bill is collectible until November of 2018. And we continually each day work delinquent accounts, whether it's real or personal property. And we have people that we do find, and they do pay these, and they have been paying these taxes. I think, oh, also, the third attachment, I have the back of a motor vehicle bill. And it tells you on there, we print a lot of important information. We tell you on the front of the bill. Now, this is on the old RMVs. We would tell you on the front that there's important information on the back of the bill. And then you can see all of the pertinent information on the back of that motor vehicle bill. And finally, the last piece of paper I have is we have broken out the motor vehicles through the 10-year statutory limit. And on, we started tracking the number of bills that we billed when I got here. So that's the reason you don't have the number of bills from 204 to 208. But you'll have the total number of bills. And you can see the 12 and 13, the impact on the total number of bills that the new tag and tax together legislation has made on the number that we actually. And then you've got a collection percentage rate in the next column, the number of bills that are left that we are still working in the third, and the amount, the amount of money in the bottom right-hand corner that we are continuously pursuing on those.
Thank you, ma'am. As your agenda illustrates, this is a matter for discussion and information purposes. Anyone want to discuss this, Tom?
I do. The reason I raise this is the taxpayer that actually called and several of us were in emails that you got to see the circumstances. He actually moved to Wake County apparently in October of 2008. He sold the vehicle in November. He was unaware that he really owed taxes. In personal conversations with him, he was thinking, "Well, he paid the taxes before, weren't due until January, and therefore going forward, you know, whoever bought the car, they would end up owing it." So he really wasn't thinking about that. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that in no way do I want to imply that Kathy Booker or her staff have done anything illegal or wrong or whatever. I think they're going by the letter of the law. But the problem I see is that it's so inflexible. For instance, if you notice where she pointed out, at the bottom of this little thing that came back when he turned in his tag, the county requires a copy of this receipt, yada, yada. It says within one year. How many of you have ever moved before? Have you had lots of things on your mind during the time of that move? Could something like this fall through the cracks? I find it very convenient that the taxpayer has one year to do something, but the government has 10. The things that, during the exchanges, it came out that we go after, we go after the biggest tax dollars first. Well, that means some of the smaller things like this can go on and on and on and on. In this case, for six years, interest and penalties and whatever added on to it unbeknownst to the guy. Thinking that he's paid his taxes all the time, he doesn't really, he's not aware of this. And we can say that we sent out all these other notices. And like I said, during a move, there's a lot of things going on. But what happens when the individual finally gets, I'm going to say, caught up with? We send a notice of garnishment of wages. Do you know what that can do to somebody's career? I have worked for Fortune 100 company that if that were to happen, your career is dead with that company. Know what happened if you're in the military and something like this comes up? Your career is put at severe risk. How is it that we can find them six years later, but we couldn't find them the next year? How come we couldn't find them in 2009 or 2010 before the penalties and interest kept stacking up? And now, after inquiring about this, is the law's very convenient. It's convenient for government. There is no tie. The taxpayer is always the loser. Is, I would like to see us forgive the interest and the penalties and the collection fee because we waited so long. But according to the law, we can't do that. I say we can. If this board chooses to, we can. Does it put us somewhat at risk? Well, I'll let Janice talk about that if she wants to. But the bottom line is, we waited six years. And then we didn't even get a hold of him. We went to his job and garnished his wages. I find that offensive. If you can find his place of employment, then by golly, another phone call and you can find out his residence. And then you could send it out. And you could have said, we could have done this a lot sooner than what we did. So let's say that this was a little bit smaller. Would we have waited eight years? Would we have waited nine years? Would we have waited 10 years? Maybe a better policy might be that we go after the oldest stuff first. And I know that the new vehicle tag laws and stuff may help prevent this going forward. But there's still others out there that I've, that I just think that this sets the stage for what other things are out there that aren't going to be caught up with automatically, like the new tag and tax, where somebody has moved and then we go after them. And let's say they're in California or Tennessee or wherever the heck they are. I just feel like we should look at things and say, "Did this guy obviously try to defraud the county of Pitt?" I think there is absolutely no evidence to that. I can see very easily how somebody could get caught up in this. And especially with the timing. Had this been a February move and the selling of vehicle in March, I doubt it would have been a problem. But in any case, I wanted to bring this forward, to discuss it, for the rest of the Commissioners to ask ourselves, are we treating taxpayers fairly? And I think that this law is harsh. The state statutes protect, I'm going to say, government. And one of the things that it's in there is that we can't, Janice, if you'll help me with this, we can't forgive certain things because of the statutes. Well, that might be because in the past, certain government officials have played favorites with individuals. And so they wrote the law inflexible such that we can't play favorites with anybody. But unfortunately, they get caught up in the dragon. The innocent get caught up in that inflexibility. So, Janice, is there anything that this board can do on individual cases like this to where we could actually forgive the interest and penalties?
Not under the laws that's currently written. The law as it's currently written defines the tax to include the interest and penalties. And it prohibits a governing body from releasing or refunding it or compromising that tax unless one of the three instances that Ms. Booker referenced is applicable. And those are not applicable in this particular case situation. The consequence of refunding, releasing, or compromising any portion of the tax when one of those three circumstances does not exist is that it will result in personal liability for each member of the board who voted for that release if a civil action is brought in a court of justice to seek that remedy.
Of course, the chances of a civil action probably be nil. But the point is, is that the law is unforgiving. And so therefore, if we can't do something here, and oh, by the way, the person that brought this whole thing to head, he has paid those taxes and he has paid the interest and penalty. He did express that it took him a few moments of pause to push the, you know, transmit button. But what can we do as a board to give aid to Kathy and/or change the rules such that we go after things sooner rather than later? Why couldn't we have gone out the second year? I mean, she's documents where she says there's three communications early on right after the move. But why not in 2010? Why not in 2011?
I can't answer to you what went on, you know, because they work those continuously. I can't answer what happened in between that time. But I'm sure that they continue to work that. I just don't have any documentation.
Well, I'm sure too. But per the communications, you had said that you go after the biggest dollars first.
You asked me...
And this one was, I think, $266 originally or some, something like that. And now it came out to $400 and plus dollars. Point is, is that it just, we allowed it to drag on. And the convenience of the law that we have 10 years to go after somebody. The thing is, we can say, okay, there's nothing that prevents us, I mean, provided in the law for us to forgive any interest and penalty. But the law says we can go and collect for 10 years. But there's nothing that I can find that says that we have to go at year six or year eight or year 10. We could cap that. If we haven't gone for it in five years or four years or three years, we could say it's uncollectible. We could say that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's the reason I provided you with the breakdown sheet.
Right. But we, as a Board of Commissioners, have imposed upon Kathy, or whoever the tax collector is, certain rules. And so she's going by that. All I'm saying is, I think we should go after the oldest stuff. I don't think we should allow anything to go on for five and six years. I think if we haven't collected, if we can't catch up with somebody in four or five years, I think it's very callous to potentially ruin somebody's career. Now, this particular individual is, that's not the case. I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of having worked for Fortune 100 companies before, that I know what their rules are. And because there's so many people that could be caught in this scenario, it's like every seven years, people move? So that means their potential is every seven years, a person could get caught up into I don't know what else we can do other than what I've just suggested. And anybody else has anything else, I'd be glad to hear either their support or reasons why we need to keep doing what we're doing.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Webb, Mr. James, Scott, and Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just echo Mr. Coulson's sentiments on that. Also, when you find these addresses, because I was contacted by a guy who lives in Tennessee, moved there in 2008, and he got a tax bill, a similar, very similar situation. I mean, when you do the investigation and you see that their address is obviously outside of commute, you know, no one's driving from here to Tennessee to work on a daily basis. Wouldn't it also be fair to assume that they moved since that date? I mean, I understand, and all of us, we're taxed six ways to Tuesday on everything, whether you buy something, whether you have something. You own something, you pay the county. You buy something, you pay the state. It's just the way it is. You earn something, the federal government and state gets that too. So it's probably not high on someone's priority list. And I think most people would assume that when they move, especially to another state and they register in that state and they have been a taxpayer in that state, that they are not going to have a penalty from a previous county they lived in. Because, you know, a lot of people don't know, when does the tax attach? The moment you live in Pitt County, do you owe a year's tax on your vehicle or is it prorated by the month? What do you owe, when do you owe? And I also want, real quick, before you answer, I want to echo what he said into that this is not an indictment of you or your staff. We know that you're doing exactly what the law prescribes. We're just trying to find a remedy for people who have acted responsibly. And then they move and they get this feeling that they've been irresponsible when they haven't.
We go after with, you know, just as hard as we can. It is our goal to increase the collection rate each and every year for you. And the staff works really hard for that. But also along the way, there are additional searches that we've never had before that we were able to use...
we were able to use now to locate people.
I mean, if, I know one thing I've used at work is something called LexisNexis, and it'll tell me where someone's lived. So if, if someone's delinquent from 2008 and you see that they're, have been employed since 2008 in Tennessee, it, there's no remedy for that to say, okay, they, they obviously moved in this month of this year. Is there not a way to prorate or?
It is up to the taxpayer to do that. And, and we provide information as many places as we possibly can. We don't know when somebody's moved unless they do a forwarding order. Even all of our mail that we mail out, and you could see the massive number of bills that were sent out before tag and tax, they go through the national change of address. So if there's no change of address, and we don't know, DMV does not let us know when anybody has changed. We use tools such as Accurant, which is LexisNexis. We use tools as, such as that. We use debt set off. But we have to have a social security number to do that with. So we have to search.
I, I understand that part. I just mean, in general, if, if I look at a piece of paper and I see this person's delinquent since '08 and...
I have no statutory authority to release a valid bill.
Gotcha. And so they're being charged from 2008, 2009, and on until?
The 10-year. But I do want to tell you one thing. Most people do not have a year. These motor vehicles have that year for that proration. Usually you have 30 days on a bill. And the motor vehicles are much longer.
Thank you.
Mr. James?
I'm a little different than the speaker so far. I appreciate what you're doing. And I think you, we've instructed you to go out for the money if they owe it and collect it, no matter where they are. I have to pay my taxes, and I expect other people to pay their taxes. Now, I believe that you said that you had tried to get them and had contacted them three times. Is that correct?
Through the mail, but there was...
Through the mail.
A change of address that we weren't aware of.
Why isn't it some system that you send them a registered letter saying that? I think that would solve the problem, really. Because I think, I know I get tax notices, as you know, all during the year, really, sometimes. But I, I think when they, most people know when they owe money. And I don't care where you go to New York. If you, if you, if I'm living in New York, owe them taxes, they could come to North Carolina, collect that tax regarding this. And I think it is, if we have notified them and they know it, then I think they should pay it. If they have not been contacted and did, they did not know anything about it, and you know that, then I think we should cooperate and do something about it to relieve them of their responsibility and let them pay what they know that they did owe. But I, I want you to continue to be aggressive. To get the money, if it's on, owed to Pitt County, we have all these people that we have to pay.
I did want to let you know, it's extremely expensive to certify.
Yeah, I, I...
I mean, the postage is very expensive itself, if you look at the postage. But certified is extremely expensive.
Yeah, and I realize that. But there's not, do you have many cases like this? You do?
6,000. We have payments made.
How successful are you in collecting the money from these people that owe this money?
When we do locate them, we are successful.
You are. Because by law, I know they're supposed to pay just like this. And, but I, I don't want you to drop back and say, well, maybe I'll not be as aggressive. But you know, that's how we get that 98% payment. Of course, not on the vehicles, but you know, being aggressive. So, and I know, there's two sides to every corner, of course. I know that.
And I use the same techniques that all the other tax administrators use across the state.
And I appreciate it. Get them. Helps us out.
Mr. Allen?
I just wanted to note, I think Ms. Booker had mentioned it, but they did, used to send out 11,000 registered motor vehicle bills per month with, how many staff in that division?
Well, you have 10.
10.
But that includes the management, too, as well.
And, and that's bill, that used to be billing the, the active accounts. You know, working delinquent accounts was on top of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
But the good news is, as of September last year, tax and tag really should eliminate this problem. Because you, instead of having just a Pitt County database and 99 other separate databases, you now have one, one database representing all 100 counties. So when a car or vehicle is moved from one county to another, or I guess the out-of-state situation would not be taken care of. But in terms of internally to North Carolina, that's part of the reason tax and tag was, was developed and put into place. Just want to point out that the severity, this should trail off in years to come. Whether it's 10 years, because we still have 10 years worth of accounts will be delinquent. But it will get less and less as we go forward. Eventually, it'll be, should be no problem to Kathy's staff and herself.
Neil?
I look at this last sheet that you have with the columns on it, and I see someone asked the question, do we have many of these out there? And I think I'm correct in that there's 6,132 of these?
For 2013, if you look all the...
Right. Presently, at this time, we have that many delinquent motor vehicle that you all are pursuing, correct? At whatever degree and whatever year and that sort of thing. That's a lot.
Through all of the remedies that they make available to us.
That's a whole lot. And I don't know, I don't have a clue how many out of that 6,132 that if we were to forgive or do whatever, that that would, you know, they would raise their hand and say, you know, I had that problem too, or I have a problem similar, and here we go. The only thing that I heard is that we are abiding by the law. Not the only thing, but that's, and that's been reiterated in many of the communications that all of us have received. And those of us who got the emails, if you could see how many times there was communication. And, you know, the money was building up as it went along, even after this particular person, in this case, was aware of what was going on. I've learned a long time ago that when you get anything that has to do with taxes, state, federal, or local, you better read. I don't always read the fine print, but I sure do when I get something like that. And I don't know why I wasn't aware of it, but the, two times ago, when I traded cars, I got the little receipt when I got all my information back from motor vehicles. And I owed the taxes on that car that I had just sold between the last time I paid taxes and the day I sold it. And you may call it ignorant if you want to, but I didn't realize that that happened. I don't know whether it was because in the past, when I traded my cars, it was right on that month or whatever that I had paid. So it was right there, you know, where I read it. And I immediately called, found out how much I owed, and that was a done deal. And I'm not saying that you expect everybody to do that. I mean, you kind of do. But I think our hands are tied as far as the law is concerned. The only thing that I could think of that we might be able to help, some of these people would be to, for us to look at, am I correct in that we can change the number of years instead of 10, lowering it to eight or six? Is that, is that correct? That that's the absolute only thing that we could do as a county?
That's one thing that you could do.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I don't, I won't, I won't make a motion in that form, but I'd like for us to kind of consider maybe having you and our staff take a look at that and see if that would help you over this next period of years before the tax tag stuff falls into place, when it'll be easier and we'll have a statewide system that's dealing with it if someone moves out of state.
That's the reason that tag and tax does not issue a bill.
Yes, I realize that. And I think that, that'll help. But I don't know of anything else we could do that would make this a little more palatable. And I'm not necessarily recommending it, but that's something that maybe we'd like to consider. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I'm understanding what Mr. Coulson is bringing before this board for discussion, the change he's requesting, it seems to me, it can begin with the General Assembly of North Carolina. And every year, I have encouraged the members of this board to attend Assembly Day and discuss the key issues with the members of the General Assembly. And I make it a point to be there. And I would ask that Mr. Coulson and anyone else who finds this law to be offensive, make it a point to attend Assembly Day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick thing. I don't know that I want to cap the years, because I want to make sure we have plenty of time to go after the people who are defrauding the county. I know that Tom and I are talking about people who have really not intentionally done anything. They, and I don't think they would mind paying their base tax. And this isn't really an issue, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, about our tax officer doing exactly what they're supposed to do. And I appreciate that. I know it's a lot of work. So maybe this is something we need to look at, putting on our legislative goals to get changed, to give us that flexibility in these particular situations, which should wane and die off because of the tax and tags, for the most part, with the exceptions of people moving out of state on occasion. Because we will have a, our legislative goals come up in February of next year with the association, when we make our push with the General Assembly during the long session. So maybe that's something we need to look at adding as one of our goals to get the rest of the state to adopt. Because as you know, if we speak as 100 counties, we're usually more, a little more effective in Raleigh. And that way, we have the flexibility to maybe forgive some penalties, still let people pay the base tax that they did owe for when they lived here. But at the same time, allow our tax office the full flexibility in the years they need to go without people. Because there are those who just intentionally do not pay. And, and that holds back our education system, our public safety, and all the services that those same people expect this county to provide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gash?
Yes. I just wanted to say that I also talked with this young man from Tennessee. Spent considerable time on the phone with him. And I have a great deal of sympathy for his concern. And I would love to be able to forgive him of the interest. However, according to the law, we cannot do that. And then the other thing that would concern me is, if we did do that, we would be establishing a precedent, and we would have to write a whole bunch of other procedures as to what the cutoff point was, because we need to treat everybody equally. The way the law is now, we have to treat everybody equally. The one suggestion that I would have, this receipt, North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles receipt, I would think that it would be of significant value to have that note down there, maybe written larger and maybe even in red, because that is a very, very important note. And a lot of us, when we receive receipts, we just say, well, that means I'm, I'm taken care of. But unless we read that note down there and have actually moved, then we have not been taken care of, because there's action we need to take. And any way we could highlight that, I think it would be good. Now, realize this is a North Carolina state form.
Yes, we can pass that along and request that.
But we can surely pass that along. I see the last time it was revised was in August of 96. So it's passed your revision anyway. But I, I think if we could maybe put that in red and make those letters a little larger, it would highlight it.
I think we've discussed this now. If there's nothing further on this, we'll move on to...
Actually, I would like to see if you would. Kathy has been, during this, this whole thing, I'd just like to point out, she's been very professional. She could have very easily taken some of the comments made by the taxpayer, me and, and others, to personal. I saw no evidence where she did. She took the law. She explained it. She sent out stuff. I even asked Janice to validate it, make sure that there was no exception, so on. But Kathy, you and your staff have been very excellent people to work with on this. So thank you, and I appreciate that. And, and you not taking it personal, because it's not.
No, we, we deal with this every day with taxpayers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go back to item number...
One.
One. No, 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 I'm wrong. We're going back to the airport.
Airport, yeah.
All right. Come around, please.
Commissioner, my apologies for being late. Timing was different than we thought. Our humble apologies. My name's John Banks. I'm the chairman of Pitt Greenwill Airport. And this is Jerry Vickers. He's the executive director and finance manager of the airport.
John, pull that little thing up there closer to you.
Oh, boy.
That's a little better.
Thank you. Presentation you got right there. We've got an opportunity for a based aircraft in the Pitt Greenwill Airport with a tax value of $37 million. And we'd like to build a hangar out there to accommodate this aircraft. And the hangar will also be able to accommodate two other aircraft. The potential tax for the county and cities is approximately $50 million. But just on one aircraft, it's $37 million. Hangar's 18,000 square feet. Currently, we do not have anything of that size to be able to put a aircraft for this height there. It's a Falcon jet. It's being bought this month, being flown from Germany to Arkansas to be outfitted and then to be based, hopefully at the Pitt Greenwill Airport next January in timeframe. They'll be outfitting the aircraft in Arkansas for the next six months. Estimated cost is $2 million. That $2 million includes the land, outfit, infrastructure for taxiways, and locating it right beside the roadways. You come into Pitt Greenwill Airport, there's a vacant lot, was the National Guard, Army Reserve, Army Reserve facility. We tore it down two years ago. And we're looking for new revenue for the airport. Over the past several years, our revenue has been decreasing from the airlines. They are doing what's called tankering around us. They come in with more fuel and doesn't buy a lot of fuel from us. We're doing well as far as trying to create new revenue. But this is a, a big bang for the airport for revenue increasing. They'll buy approximately $75,000 worth of jet fuel a year. And that's just, just the one aircraft, not counting two other aircraft potentially that we can put in there. What we're looking for from the city, and I'll let you, gentlemen and ladies, read down through here, we're looking for an agreement between city and county for six years, or we can share the revenues with the city and county. And 80% of the ad valorem taxes would be going back into our reserves to replenish our cash reserves to be able to do the same thing again. If this is successful, we won't have to borrow money, won't have to do any kind of bonding. It will be a recurring event for the airport to invest money, build facilities, so jets can come to the airport, and the city and county can share in that prospective tax properties. The agreement is approximately for six years. Janice and her staff and the city and the airport attorney worked out a very nice agreement, fair to everybody. I think they were an agreement that everybody needed to share in this arrangement. And I believe the attorneys worked that out very nicely in a short period of time. And we, we do appreciate that. We're looking for more revenue. We've been recruiting airlines for years. We're trying to find a second airline to come to Pitt County. We haven't been successful yet, but that's an ongoing project for us. As Mr. James asks us in every meeting, what are we doing about getting an airline in there? It's a question that's asked in the community. It's asked by Mr. James and other board members. We've, we don't have an airport, an, excuse me, airline yet that's coming here as committed. But we continually are recruiting them all the time. So that's, that's another source of revenue. But we are being more proactive on being creative, getting more, more revenue inside of what we got, the abilities we got. We have plenty of land there to develop. And this is an excellent way for us to have instant revenue, continued revenue, and grow the revenue that's based at Pitt Greenwill Airport. And we would appreciate your support on this agreement that we're having. Any questions I can answer for you?
Mr. Presentation this morning is concise and specific. And we've had our material in the agenda. Are there any questions that we... Are there any questions that would, any member of the board like to ask? Tom?
Supposing we do this, and this one aircraft that's going to produce $450,000 taxes a year, what if it goes away to somewhere else?
There's another slot for another aircraft. Either way, we have to build. If we don't build, it's not a situation where the aircraft won't come. We've lost three aircraft the last 12 months with a value of about $25 million, because we had nowhere for them to go. These, these type of individuals, the companies buy aircraft, and they say, okay, we've got to put somewhere. Some build their own. We have Grady White, NACCO, and other local companies that have facilities here and have private aircraft. But some companies are from out of town, and they were to base their aircraft here because the pilots live here. There's no guarantees. There's no guarantees that it comes, stay three, five, seven years. We would do a lease, and we'll have a lease, hopefully, for five years. And we hope that we have two more aircraft to come in and do the same thing. But we continually have aircraft looking to be based in Greenville, and we have nowhere to put them.
Well, supposing that they're here for a year or two?
Yes, sir.
And then they leave. At the end of the six years, anything that goes in there, will we collect the taxes? Or will you be back asking that, well, we didn't get our reserves replenished, so therefore will you extend this?
We, Janice was very, and Dave Hollick was very plain, we're looking at six years. If we don't get it back in six years, we'll have to go back and look at it again, but hopefully that won't happen. The whole basis on this, we're using the airport reserves to build this, and as we replenish this along the way, with the leases, they'd be paying the lease money, that lease money and the revenues we're talking about from the city and county, we're going to the same pot, go back to reserves.
Well, just on that one aircraft, it appears it's about a four-and-a-half-year ROI.
Yes, sir.
Which is not bad. So you can put some other aircraft in there. What do you think the chances are that you'll be able to keep it full for a six-year period? And we're not going to hold you to it. What's your reasonable...
I project on the, my glass is always half-full. I think we do very well. We have aircraft coming every day, and this year's been extraordinary for storms, bad weather. And when you have a $3 to $7 million aircraft sitting on the ramp, and it's lightning and thunder, and they think hail's coming, they'll fly the aircraft to another airport out of the storm area, then come back and pick up their staff. What we do is, I think we charge about $250, Jerry, $250 per night for open aircraft space, hangar space for them to put their aircraft in, just for a thunderstorm. So it's, it's a valuable asset for us to have, and we don't have the asset now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Finished, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gash?
Yes, I am very supportive of this. I think it's a win-win for the community, and of course, the airport. Whenever the airport has a win, then our community has a win. So I'm supportive. I did have a couple of questions, though. Number one, what would be the gross lease per year? The gross lease, because that's part of that money that's going to go in to offset this $2 million.
Of the one jet, or potentially three?
Of the one, the only one right now.
I want to first apologize. The only thing I've been late nine hours for was my wedding on July 1st of 1971, and it has an indelible memory. I've never forgotten my anniversary.
I'm sure you're reminded of that also.
Young bride in Arkansas, she's still with me. With regard to your question, I think we, in fact, have a meeting this afternoon with a prospective client to kind of outline more details about his requirements, about the length of the term of the lease. We are obviously going to require a long-term lease to do this. Order of magnitude, I don't want, I don't want to negotiate in open, but I can assure you, it will be a steady stream that we do not have today. And I also mentioned, in terms of Commissioner Coulson's remarks, that we take all the risk in this deal. If, if in, worst-case armageddon happens and a gentleman found a way out of the lease or left, your, the airplane's gone, we would have taken the risk. We would have put the $2 million plus out there. So the risk is all shifted back to the airport. You lose the opportunity for the tax money, we lose the opportunity for the 80% to replenish our capital reserves. And the other reason, this is vitally important to us, is Chairman Banks and our board have taken a really aggressive approach to reinvesting capital in the airport. Over the last two years, the board has pressed, spent over $1 million in building two sets of T-hangers. That's brought, that houses 20 aircraft at Pitt Greenville Airport. Never been done before. It is not great revenue generator, because those are small airplanes, they don't burn a lot of fuel. But we've decided to reinvest to take care of our general aviation community. And we have $1 million fronted, as we speak today, in FAA projects that we will get reimbursed in future years. So to have that capital funds to reinvest in the things the board wants to move the airport forward with, we need to have this capital reserve replenished over the next five or six years. The board is, we're currently doing a master plan, development, redevelopment. The board has taken a very aggressive approach out of three different levels of, of moving forward. I hope I've answered your question. I apologize for the length.
That's okay. And the reason I was interested in what that figure might be is because the bigger that figure is, the quicker we can replenish that $2 million, and the taxes on those new aircraft can go 100% to the general fund.
Absolutely.
The, the second question I had, and this is kind of a curiosity question, why, how did you arrive at the 80% number?
That was between the attorneys and looking after the better interest of the city and county, hoping that everybody would be sharing to some extent and getting their returns back.
Okay, I, I agree with the sharing piece. I just was thinking that 80% was a little high, Madam Attorney. But anyway. And then my third question, very quickly, has the city already agreed to this?
No, no, sir, we've not had a meeting with them yet.
Okay, fine.
Next Monday night.
Next Monday night.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. James, you got a motion?
Yes, but I'd like to say this before I make the motion, is that when I came on this board 30 years ago, we were subsidizing the airport, if you remember. Since that time, we have made great progress in, the airport authority has made great progress. Jimmy, you know it more than anybody, probably, because you own that. But we can't sit still. We must grow. And I think the board that you have out there, the authority, they are open-minded, and the thing that this board did approximately three or four years ago, when we cooperated with the owners of the aircraft out there, giving them a tax break, was one of the best things that we could have ever done. It brought airplanes back to Pitt County. Instead of losing them, we gained them. And like they said in the beginning here, it's a win-win situation, not only for the airport, but for the city of Greenville, for the county of Pitt. And if we continue to go as we go forth, we have the land now, there, we can really do great things. It's a big business, is what it is, a big one. And I'm so proud of what they are doing, Jerry, John, I really am on that. And, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation that has been set forth by the airport authority here for, for the county of Pitt.
I second it.
All right, any further discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
You got something you can take back to the city council?
Yeah. We would like to say, it's probably the last time we have fronted the board. Mr. James, we appreciate your service to our board. You've been there and saw some good things and some not-so-good things happen over the last few years. You were there, it's thick and thin, and we appreciate your service.
I would like to echo that. I've only had the opportunity to work with you five years. I wish it had been 50. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
And I want to say, Mr. Chairman, too, the entire board supports this 100% in the authority. We think, we think it's the right way to go for the future of the airport.
Very good. Page 63, Phil?
Mr. Chairman, Phil is not here this week. If you'll allow, let me take this item. This is the...
Actually, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and we exempt the animal shelter project from going through the bidding, and go ahead and use the DW Architects.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, let's vote. All right. Sheriff Foot's contract. Anybody want to make a similar motion?
I make a motion, we approve this, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
All right, let's vote. All right, number 69, like manner. Is there a motion for that?
I second it.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, number 71, page 71. Come around, John. Board got any questions on that?
No.
No questions. I move that we accept the recommendation.
All right, let's vote. Okay, number five under decision, Dr. Mar.
I move we approve, is it changes?
All right, we got a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
All right.
You had your hand up first.
I, you know, there's nothing more...
Wait just a minute, and I'll de-process, we're a little ahead of time. Why don't we wait for discussion on that till Dr. Mar gets here? That I have the board, agreeable? All right, let's go to number six then. Appointment to the Home Community Care Block Grant Committee.
Make a motion that we appoint the three persons mentioned, named on page 78, to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee.
All right, let's vote. Development Commission?
Chairman, I make a motion that we designate a seat as a Pitt County College, Community College representative seat, and that we appoint Thomas Gould to that seat.
I second it.
Let's vote. All right, ABC Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Melvin Michael Hawn to serve as the ABC...
Seconded.
Let's vote. Okay, number nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendations put forth by the board there. I think these people have to have specific things for, to serve on that committee, or that board, excuse me.
Second. All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, there is a...
Go ahead, Scott.
There is a note that, in terms of reappointing Susan Dudley, that she has served an accident number of terms, it would be an exception to the board's policy to report.
But there's also a note that that position has been advertised for, and we have no applicants, so I'm in support of it.
Read the vote. Okay, Dr. Mar, I believe you need to come up. We were a little ahead of ourselves. There'd been a motion to, to second it to the issue that you have before the board, and we are now open for discussion, so we'll let you proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We currently have a smoking policy for the county that restricts smoking on public grounds and in our vehicles and in the departments, like the health department. What we've run into, as most of y'all know about, electronic cigarettes is something that's taken off across the country. There's been a really large increase in the number of folks that are using these. And we noted that in our old policy for smoking in, in the county, we did not have anything about electronic cigarettes in it. We've recently had folks come into our health department who have tried to use these devices. We have pregnant women and children in that lobby. So there's a concern right now about the contents of electronic cigarettes. We really don't know what's in them yet. The FDA has taken this issue up nationally. They're looking at, trying to figure out, are they, could they be used as smoking cessation devices, for instance? What are the contents of these devices? Are there any hazards to them, either for the users or to people standing near someone using one? And the bottom line is, we don't know the answer to that yet. So the Board of Health has looked at this issue, and there's been a draft of changes to the smoking policy for the county, which would include electronic cigarettes. And the recommendation from the Board of Health is, is that this board adopt that new, those changes that include electronic cigarettes, until we know more about them.
All right, any discussion? Let's see, for recall situations, we had a motion that was made to approve, is that correct? Who seconded that motion?
I seconded the motion.
All right, now for discussion, Tom?
My question is, when does government draw the line? You'd made the statement that until we find out, well, let's say we find out a year from now, there's absolutely nothing harmful. Will we be going back and remending this and, and allowing them to be able to smoke these electronic cigarettes wherever? Dr. Mar, with all due respect, I'm an ex-smoker. There's nothing worse than us reform smokers. We don't like being around cigarettes, we don't like being around smelling the smoke and stuff, and I think it's one of the worst things you can possibly do. However, I think people should be able to do what they want to do. I can see us having rules and regulations to having designated areas. But, you know, at some point, we're going to drive them out into the, into the yellow line in the middle of the street and say, this is the only place you can do this. I just think that we're going overboard, and I don't think that, I'm probably not going to be able to vote to support this at this point.
Well, I would remind you, we already do have designated areas for smoking. So all this rule would do is to let those electronic cigarette smokers go to the same place that regular cigarette smokers go to, to use them. So they can step outside of our buildings and use those devices right now. The only concern is that if we bring them into the lobby or other parts of the building, they're exposing our patients, including children and pregnant women, and they're also exposing our staff, which exposes us to liability. If there are problems from these devices later, then employees could come back and say that we did not protect them properly from exposures to these hazardous chemicals. Which I say, right now, we don't know what those chemicals are and what those exposure limits are, we just don't know enough. So with, with other foods and drugs, the same way, you know, we don't allow those products in certain ways, because until they prove their safety, we've learned that lesson, you know, a long time ago. That's how the Food and Drug Administration came around, because people were selling drugs, and they were taking things that were unsafe, they were selling things that weren't safe.
Dr. Mar, are there any vending machines in any of the locations that you're familiar with, where they sell things that would be considered to be not the most healthful thing to eat?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so therefore, you allowing those machines to be there, you're putting us at financial risk, you're saying, liability? Because if it's determined that something that's in those food products are bad for somebody, they might get overweight, they might suffer a heart attack, they might get cholesterol, they might, they might, they might, where do you draw the line, Dr. Mar? Obviously, we've drawn it with, it's allowed with a vending machine. I'm wondering, when the vending machines go in there, is there any revenue stream that comes, that we won't go there?
Well, we don't allow vending machines that sell cigarettes in the, in the department.
I didn't say that. But you made the statement that, that if it was, if they were to allow somebody in there, that somebody could sue based on the fact they were, they were being exposed to something unhealthful. Well, you've just admitted, we have vending machines in there that sell food products that are not necessarily very healthful, is that correct?
But all of those food products have been approved for food products. So they have been approved, and they're legal to sell.
But that hasn't stopped government in many local locations, has it? Even up in New York, where you couldn't buy anything larger than what have 10, 12 ounces. I know they've repealed that now.
Right.
But government gets out of hand. At what point do we say enough's enough? People should be able to make responsible decisions for themselves, and that's all I'm saying here.
Mr. James?
I feel that we are taking the rights of individuals away. We have a lot of... We have a lot of smart people. They know what's good for them, they know what's bad. And I think that we need to let them use their own good judgment in many cases. But that's not what I'm concerned, as I looked over the ordinance that is presented here, it wasn't just talking about the health department, is it? Isn't it talking about all buildings that Pitt County possessed, automobiles and so forth?
Right, it's, the only change in it is adding the electronic cigarettes. That, that rule is already in place, the policy's already in place for smoking.
I won't ask this question. Do we already have rules and regulations that you cannot smoke in a county car?
Yes.
Who's enforcing that?
It's self-enforced. I think, I think the agencies.
That's what I get that right now. We're making rules and regulations that's impossible to enforce.
Technically, Mr. James, it states that the county manager is to enforce it by complaint. So we work with employees. If somebody complains, we then, if somebody is not in compliance, we direct them to, they need to smoke at the designated smoking area. And there's been no problem. It's been.
Right. But why isn't it no problem? I read in that if they're smoking on the grounds, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's an order that if they're smoking on the ground, I as an employee of Pitt County, I go up to that individual and I say, you put your cigarette out, if you don't, I go to my superior. Is that correct? Is that not in the ordinance that we already have?
I don't think, the employees are not charged with confronting other employees, but if an employee is infringing upon somebody's, if two employees are sitting next to each other in a break room and somebody starts smoking, then yes, they could do that.
Yeah, I guess this is where I'm going to. We're making rules and regulations that's impossible to enforce or else we don't have the, what is it? We just won't enforce them. So why make these rules and regulations and put our employees under additional pressure, so to speak? Because we have the smoke laws, we have designated areas to smoke, but we come up with these new things. And I know it's bad to smoke. We don't have the people smoking in Pitt County we had five years ago. You know that, you can go to restaurants now. Things, people are beginning to realize that it's bad for me, so I'm not going to do it. I wish we could get them to realize in eating that would be bad. But we never talk about that, do we? It's just like Commissioner Coulson was saying, on your food and so forth. But I just don't see the need to come up and to make more rules and to make more regulations. I guess that's what uncertainty, I'm not going to beg for it, because I think we've got too many rules and too many regulations today. I think we need to let the good people of Pitt County make their own decisions as to what they want to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Rob. I think, Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Mar, I certainly support that. I think that because of the uncertainties of these e-cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, you don't know the components and the hazard that it could present until more study is done. So I think that we should implement that policy to reflect what we currently have. Thank you.
Mr. Garris?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with some of the comments that have been made, that government is too intrusive and people need to be able to make individual decisions. I strongly support that. However, in this particular case, it's not so much restricting the rights of individuals as it is protecting those who have to drive those cars and who have to work in the buildings from the potential danger, dangerous act of someone else. That's the way I see this. As far as a vending machine, I can get a vending machine and eat a package of potato chips and it doesn't impact anyone but me. But if I use these cigarettes, it could impact my neighbors. So that's the reason I'm going to support it and see it differently from the vending machines of the unhealthy food choices.
Glenn?
I agree with Mr. Garris. I think this is more about a code of professional conduct in a business setting, not a, not an incursion into people's personal choices, because you can still use the product. I don't think that the government should be involved in those kind of decisions. I despise when government does. But we're talking about professional conduct in a professional setting and the exposures that we're talking about are involuntary. The vending machine example, you can't be involuntarily exposed to potato chips and gain weight from them, although I feel like I do every time I see them. But for example, the other day I was in a restaurant, I was eating and someone was using one of those products and I could smell it, so if I can smell it, I'm inhaling it. And it wasn't overly offensive, but it didn't marry up with what I was trying to eat. And so it was, it was interfering with my experience, the food. So everyone's right to engage in behavior is wonderful, but it ends at my right not to engage in that behavior and that's why I support this, especially until we know, because it's reported as water vapor and I really hope that's what that is. But industry-wide, there's no standard for the chemicals, there's no real release that I know of of what's actually in there. The FDA hasn't done any studies on it. So I don't want to involuntarily expose people to things that they may just find offensive in nature as far as the smell, not just the chemicals. And so again, I think this is not about government incursion, I think it's about professional conduct in a professional setting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I was part of the group when we passed the, the smoking ordinance. I think that does a very good job. I was, thought that the health issue was very germane and to the point. But by your own acknowledgement, Dr. Mar, you've thrown water on that to me this morning because, and some of the commissioners spoke to this, we know health situation and ordinance is for vanity means, but you say you don't know anything about this. You don't know where it's going to be, you're guessing. If I read, wait, if I'm wrong, you correct me. But I thought you told one of them in the beginning that you didn't have enough information on this to tell where, did I misread what you said?
No, I think that's, that's correct, but we do know some things about the electronic cigarettes. Mr. Webb is correct, we don't, there's no requirement for these products to release the contents right now. So a lot of these products are coming in from China. The chemicals are made there, we have no idea what's in them. So we do know that the nicotine electronic cigarettes, and it's being studied right now by the FDA, there may be a use for them as a cessation product because they can wean people off of tobacco products. So that's, that's seriously being looked at and may be, you know, a really valid use for these things. The other things that are in them and what the vapors contain that come out of them is very unclear at this point. So we just need to study it before.
That having been said, that's why I'm opposed to changing the ordinance at this time and I vote therefore. I don't think you can preclude everything by speculation and so I'm going to vote against it. Anybody else want to say anything about it?
I just think that we have the ordinance in place. If you talk to anyone who smokes and eats cigarette, they call it smoking, they do not call it vaporizing. So I just, I support changing the amendment. I don't think it affects anything in the sense that we have a place for them to smoke e-cigarettes and we have a place for them to smoke tobacco-based cigarettes. And if you want to smoke one, you can go there and do it. Thank you.
Anything, any other discussion? If not, we've got a motion made and seconded, we've had discussion, let's vote. Thank you, Dr. Mar. Okay, next order of business is, have we got everything now except the commissioner's comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll start over here with Reverend Hammond. We have any comments today?
No, sir.
Reverend James?
No.
Tom Coulson?
None.
There?
No, thank you.
Mr. Webb? Dr. Johnson? Mr. McElhawn? Mr. Garris? Oh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I may adjourn.
So ordered. Thank y'all.
Did you want that confidential stuff back?
We can shred it if you, if you would like to give it to me, I'll, we'll have to shred it.